I'd like to call our regular school board meeting to order October 22nd. Can I get roll call, please?
Mr. Crowe, here. Mr. Thede.
Here.
Mrs. Fundenberg.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mrs. Beard, here. Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Mr. Kudrick.
Present. We all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the Board or any citizens requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the report of the superintendent's portion of the agenda. Item A: Approval. To approve the minutes of the Board of Education of the regular meeting of September 24th, 2012, and the study session of October 8th, 2012. Item B: To approve the personnel actions submitted by Rebecca Peck, Director of Human Resource, Retirement, Custodial Layoff, Paraprofessional Employment and GSRP Teacher Aid and GSRP Teacher and Latch Key Aid. Item C: To approve bills for payment as submitted by Sherry Papazaglu, Director of Business and Operation, in the amount of $2,668,621.39. Item B: To approve the proposed field trip to Washington DC and Gettysburg, Pennsylvania for the Romulus Middle School eighth graders on May 8th through May 11th, 2013, at no cost to the district.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Support.
I got a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Ms. Buckley. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Seven oh. All right, the next item is going to be the report of the superintendent. I'll turn the meeting over to him.
Thanks, Mr. President. First off, we have Mr. Dave Fisher, who is our chief auditor this year, and he's here to give a report to the Board. You had in your packet all the detailed information, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fisher. This is his second time here giving us our audit summary, so welcome back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss, and a pleasure to be here this evening. And as stated, I'm going to go over the financial statements draft of the audit report for the year ended June 30th of '12, and there's certainly a lot of information in the report that complies with all the inclusions required by the Michigan Department of Education and generally accept accounting principles as far as the content like you've had before. And just kind of walk you through a few of the pages that I feel is more important to you, the oversight body of the audit process. On pages one and two is the independent auditor's report, and that report reflects a clean opinion on the financial statements. That's really the culmination of what we do in an audit, is report on the fairness of these financial statements that are independently prepared internally by the business office here at the district. So we independently audit those numbers, and a lot of schedules here are the audited numbers that we audit. Besides that, we look at the various internal controls that you have for your cash receipt systems, the payroll, the cash disbursements, to make sure that all the controls are there that can be achieved at your size of district. So we'll finish with a certain letter regarding that. But first of all, want to go over the main financial statements, the big report, and pages four through nine of that report is called the Management Discussion and Analysis section. That section has been with us for all governmental unit reports, not only school districts, but counties and cities, provided by management to explain in paragraph form why things happened the way they did. So it more or less supplements some of the financial statement numbers that I'm going to be referring to. So it's very good reading, especially on page number nine, the economic outlook for the future. Talks about the budgetary process here in 2012, '13, the fiscal year that we're in now, and what may happen here. So to go over a couple of schedules, if you go back to page number 18, you can see the major funds, and this is in various condensed form, the revenues and expenditures of the major funds. And in the leftmost column there is the general fund, and that's where most of the activity, the operational activity of the district occurs. Total revenues, as you can see there, $38,159,000. Total expenditures, $38,782,000. For the year, there was a drop in fund balance of $618,000 for the year, and I think Sherry may say something about the number here, how it got adjusted near the end of the year in a closing entry regarding property taxes, but I'll just continue. But this loss follows losses in the previous two years. There was a loss in 2011, last year, $2,736,000. In 2010, there was a reduction in fund balance then of $3,774,000. So you're down to $2,393,000 in fund balance. And of that fund balance, the unassigned or unreserved portion of that is $1,916,000. So most of it is unassigned or unrestricted, but if you take that number and divide by your total annual expenditures for the year, that $38,783,000, it comes out to about 5%. So really, you know, you can't keep sustaining losses that you've had over the last couple three years and still maintain a positive fund balance. It's good that you do have positive fund balances in this operating fund, but the trend is not good. And unfortunately, I'm going around to a lot of districts right now, and some of their funds are in deficit situation, and they have to file deficit elimination plan with the Department of Education and Department of Treasury right now. They're in that mode. So you do have that fund balance, but it's getting smaller.
And I'd like to add now, Mr. Fisher was referencing property tax, not issue, but it's a timing issue. We've had this probably the last couple of years. There were some deferred revenue that we booked, so in 11-12, we didn't expect that revenue to be considered revenue. We expected that revenue to be considered revenue in 12-13. So while you're looking at the fund balance at about $2.3 million, there's about a little $1.1 million of that, really, we had booked as a 12-13 revenue item, okay, budget-wise. At the end of the year, due to timing and when the collections are made, we were able to record that as an 11-12 entry. That's why you see the fund balance more than what we expected, which would have been about $1,300,000. I just want to preface that also, the fund balance for 12-13 doesn't change then. So really, it's a timing issue. Instead of recording revenue in 12-13, we're actually recording in 11-12. At the end of the day, our financials for 12-13 still remain the same until we go through a budget update in the next month, okay?
Thank you. Alongside the general fund is another fund, it's a major fund, a debt service fund, the 1993 debt service fund. And you can see that there is a fund balance there of $15,422. That fund balance is, of course, reserved for future principal and interest payments on that related bond issue. It cannot go back to the general fund. Those are the major funds. You certainly have other funds that are required to be kept track of separately by Michigan Department of Education. If you want to go back to pages 42 and 43 is again a summary of the revenues and expenditures, very condensed, of these funds. And you can see across, the special revenue funds include the food service fund. That includes the National School Lunch Program activities for which you get federal revenue for that. It's its own separate fund, and you have a fund balance at the end of the year of $106,471. The Community Services Fund, I think that fund was closed out during the year. The balance was returned over to the general fund.
Just to add, that's Latch Key. The only program in there is Latch Key, and a little bit of pool of revenue.
You do have four other debt service funds, and you can see that those respective fund balances, of course, again, are reserved for the debt service projects on those. And there's a separate capital projects fund at the end of the year with $360,000 in it. There was $400,000 spent in the capital projects fund this year, and there's $360,000 that's available for future years.
And we commonly refer to that as sinking fund, okay?
That's effective, that's as of June 30th.
Correct.
A lot of that's gone by.
Absolutely. That's correct.
Yeah. Now, we're talking about these debt retirement funds, and there were a couple of things that did affect the total long-term indebtedness of the district. And if we go back to one of the footnotes of the financial statements on page 33, not to get heavily involved in this, but I just wanted to point out the fact that in 2011-12, there was a refunding of the 2001-year bonds, and that was done to reduce future debt service payments by about $1,673,000. So that's what the proceeds coming in was the refunding issue, and of course, what was retired was those 2001 bonds, but it was done to achieve a savings. So that's very good. The total long-term debt of the district that you can see on that first part of the page there did go down by about $1,277,000 after the payment of the required principal payments and that sort of thing. So that's good from a long-term point of view. Now, because you have over $500,000 worth of federal financial assistance received, we're responsible for auditing your federal programs. That includes the Title I programs. You had a SIG grant, School Improvement Grant, this year, and it also includes the National School Lunch Program. A summary of those federal programs is presented back on pages 46 through 51, has all the grants listed there. Now, we're responsible for auditing all the compliance areas for the major programs, and those programs tend to rotate year after year, so you're not always auditing the same ones. But we audited the major programs for all the 14 different areas of this federal compliance manual. And the good news is that on the $5,567,000 worth of federal financial assistance, you can see on page 51, that's the total federal expenditures running through the district, through their funds. There were no findings nor questioned costs this year. Our comments from the last year have been corrected to our satisfaction. There were certain time reporting requirements that were cited in the prior year. The Michigan Department of Education and the federal government has come down very hard on the local districts in their time reporting problem for those that are federally funded. You took action to alleviate those time reporting issues this year, so you have no findings on any of the programs. So that is very good related to the federal projects.
Can I add one question? With the federal funds, and I think I asked this question last year, if it's the same one, the Section 8 housing vouchers, is that the pass-through for that fiduciary agent?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
It's passed through the city of Romulus.
Yeah, yeah, it's because we're the fiduciary agent for whatever.
That's accurate.
Thank you.
Yeah. That is...
What was that?
I said, "I do read these."
That's pretty much an overview of the regular financial statements and audit report. There is a separate letter in the form of a communication to those charged with governments, and that would be you, the Board of Education, and it's a separate letter that I believe you have as well. The first three pages of that letter is pretty much standard language about certain things that we are required to communicate to you in the audit process, about what an audit is, and I've already gone over that, to report on the fairness of your financial statements, to look at your internal controls. And if there are any audit issues, like if there were any difficulties in doing the audit, we're responsible for talking about things like that. If there were no difficulties in doing the audit, the records were in very good shape. We come in and do an audit without having to recreate a lot of adjusting journal entries, and that's the way an audit should be. There were no disagreements with management about any accounting issues. So the first three pages, there's really nothing that's unusual in there. It's all good information. There are a couple of things in Attachment A, a couple of internal control matters that are other matters that are not significant deficiencies in internal control, but there are just a couple of things that want to see tightened up, dealing with journal entries about having the preparer sign off on those journal entries. We have the reviewer sign off on them, but we just have the preparer sign off with the initial on them for a proper audit trail. And the written policies and procedures, you did implement, and that's what the Michigan Department of Education was pushing to all local districts in Michigan last year, to get federal policies in written form of all these areas, including the 14 compliance areas, in order to receive federal funds. So we, in our management letter last year, we urged all our districts to get these in writing. You did that. We'd like to see that enhanced to include all the items of the 14 areas. So you've taken most of the way there, but just take that further step to enhance that document. So if you have monitors come in from Michigan Department of Education or even the federal government, they'll ask for the federal policies, and we want to make sure that your policies is complete so they won't try to take any money back. And they've been trying to do that because the money is tight with these federal funds now. So that's pretty much my report. The items that were cited from last year, largely in the cash receipts area, including general office cash receipts, as well as childcare and food service cash receipts, have been rectified to our satisfaction. So are there any other questions?
No questions, great. Thank you, Mr. Rayman. Appreciate the good news. We're sorry that you couldn't find more money for us.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But we understand.
And it's good to know we're not alone.
That's right. Yes, it is. We appreciate you coming out tonight and the thoroughness of course.
Thank you very much, and if I can back up out of this chair without falling over the thing, I'll succeed.
I'm going to make sure you don't fall. I wouldn't want that to happen.
Yeah.
If we could find us more money, we'd put a ramp there. I know, we can't afford a lawsuit. Okay, next, we have a couple of very special people in our audience. Women, we got to make a motion here.
Yeah, they have to.
Danielle, was she a...
I'm sorry. We got to make a motion on, move for the audit report.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education acknowledge the receipt of the 2011-2012 audit.
Support.
Got a motion by Ms. Fundenberg, supported by Ms. Buckley. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, seven oh.
Okay.
Now.
But we still have a couple of very special people in our audience, and they stayed away for the auditor's report, which is a good sign. Thank you for that. And this has become, and well, it's always been an annual event, now it's a little different format for recognizing our retirees. We're very proud of the work that both of you did while you were in the district. You both dedicated many years of service, and we've prepared to kind of help you celebrate your retirement. We have a special resolution that the Board does. It's a longstanding Romulus tradition, so I'm going to turn it over to our president.
Romus Community Schools District, Board of Education, whereas the below-listed group of dedicated professionals have committed the following years of service to the Romus Community School District. William Bottom, 34 years. Michael Blackburn, 34 years. Janice Brothers, 15 years. Christine Consales, 37 years. Alberta Garrett, 34 years. Terry McCrate, 11 years. Robert McLean, 15 years. Kimberly Mikowski, 26 years. Kathleen Motley, 11 years. And Janine Prisco, 12 years. Whereas, this group of professionals has dedicated a total of 229 years of service, and whereas this dedicated group of individuals has carried out the mission and vision of the Romus Community School District in their actions, words, and years of commitment, and whereas the individuals have taught, led, and served as positive role models for the students of the Romus Community School District, as well as the Romus community, while being recognized as ambassadors of goodwill, and whereas this group has extended the normal or exceeded the normal expectations and have given of their time in an unselfish manner while always honoring the traditions of our school. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Romus Board of Education, speaking on behalf of all the people in the community, does hereby offer this official resolution of appreciation to this group of professionals for their designated distinguished careers in the Romus Community School District. Signed by the President of the School Board, Thomas Kudrick; Secretary of the Board of Education, Teresa Beard, given this 22nd day of October, 2012.
It's almost, Mr. Chairman. We need to figure out what you...
Yep. Okay. Well, let's approve it first, then. I need a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move the Board of Education approve the resolution in recognition of years of services as outlined.
I got a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Mr. Thede. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, seven oh. Now, let's see, we have these two. Could I have Mrs. Garrett?
Garrett to the principal's office.
Speech.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Humbert.
Thank you. Congratulations. Are you a type of... I should have you look.
Face the camera. Face the camera.
Thank you.
After 34 years, you can take a couple pictures.
Great to see you again, thank you.
Thank you.
You're a mess.
And thank you all. I love this district very much.
We love you.
We love you, sweetie.
We're going to miss you. Thank you.
You can visit anytime.
And our next individual is Kathleen Motley.
Motley.
Motley? Sorry about that, I apologize.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congrats. Enjoy that second time.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding sequestration, and I'm not sure that everybody understands sequestration, so maybe we'll have a little explanation as part of our discussion. To this point, but we need...
Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you, Board members, for entertaining this tonight. As you know, I serve on the MASB Government Relations Committee, and we had our meeting on Friday. That was our first meeting of the year, and obviously, some things are going to happen November 6th. And one of those things that is absolutely going to happen November 7th is the lame duck session of the federal legislature. Effective January 2nd of 2013, because the Deficit Reduction Committee that was established by Congress did not come up with alternative cuts, they're proposing an across-the-board 8.2% automatic budget reduction. That's what they've termed as sequestration. That's going to happen automatically, basically unless legislative action is taken to stop it, it's going to happen. The National School Boards Association and MASB, and actually, all the state associations, are asking their boards to adopt this resolution and transmit it to their federal legislators to let them know that they have a moral responsibility to support education. So if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, you can read this one.
This resolution is from the Romulus Community School District Board of Education. Whereas, a world-class public education is essential for the future success of our nation and today's schoolchildren, and whereas, the Budget Control Act of 2011 includes a provision to impose $1.2 trillion in across-the-board cuts to almost all federal programs, including education, that would become effective January 2, 2013, and whereas, these across-the-board budget cuts would impact school districts during the 2013-14 school year, with the exception of the Impact Aid Program, with which a reduction would become effective this school year, and whereas, these across-the-board cuts, also known as sequestration, would impact education by a reduction of funds of 8.2% or more, and could result in larger class sizes, fewer color offerings, loss of extracurricular activities, and teacher and staff layoffs, and whereas, sequestration would impact almost every public school system in the nation, and millions of students educated through programs such as Title I Grants for Disadvantaged Students, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, also known as IDEA, English Language Acquisition, Career and Technical Education, 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and more, and whereas, the Romulus Community School District, as well as other public schools, would be impacted nationwide by an estimated $2.7 billion loss from just three programs alone, Title I Grants, IDEA Special Education State Grants, and Head Start, that serve a combined 30.7 million children, and whereas, federal funding for K-12 programs was already reduced by more than $835 million in fiscal year 2011, and state and local funding for education continues to be impacted by budget cuts and lower property tax revenues, and whereas, state and local governments have very limited capacity to absorb further budget cuts from sequestration, as Romulus Community Schools has already implemented cuts commensurate to state and local budget conditions. Now... has already implemented cuts commensurate to state and local budget conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Romulus Community School District urges Congress and the administration to amend the Budget Control Act to mitigate the drastic cuts to education that would affect our students and communities, and to protect education as an investment critical to economic stability and American competitiveness.
I need some...
Somebody second? Thank you.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Ms. Fundenberg. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, seven oh.
Sign it after the meeting.
Yes, everybody does have to see Anna to sign the original, so we can send it out, please.
Okay, next item. We have our annual MASB, the Michigan Association of School Boards Conference, coming up in early November, and we have four board members that are participating. We need to, tonight, to select and approve three voting delegates.
Pick me, pick me.
Okay, the voting delegates, we're gonna, we need three voting delegates and one alternate, but the voting takes place on Thursday, so are you gonna be there, Mr. Thead, Ms. Fundenberg, Ms. Buckley, and Mr. McLaughlin?
Thursday.
Are you going, Teresa? There's five?
No, four. Rob, Danielle, Teresa, and John Thead.
You're on Thursday night?
Yes, tentative.
So you wanna be an alternate, if you're, are you tentative? Teresa, are you going, going?
I have classes at night, so I'll be there.
Okay.
So yes, you'll be there Thursday.
Rob, you'll be there, right?
Yes.
Danielle, you gonna be there Thursday?
Yeah, that's what I said, it'll be tentative.
Well, we get three alter, three designees and three alternates.
So Rob will be the alternate.
Okay, so John, you gonna be there? Okay.
So you need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move that Mr. Thead, Mrs. Beer, and Mr. McLaughlin be registered as the Board's voting delegates, and Mrs. Fundenberg as an alternate for the Delegate Assembly.
Support.
Anybody else going that wants to be an alternate?
Was that Sandy that supported it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Mrs. Kraut. Are there any questions?
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just the same comment I made last year. I've gone through the document pretty extensively. I haven't really found anything that's really controversial. I'm sure there's a comma or a period out of place, or somebody might say somebody's too fat to be educated this year, like they did last year.
Or the definition of bullying.
Yeah, and the definition of bullying, that was a thing, but Board members, if you have any concerns that you wanna make sure addressed, you all know I'm that guy. I'm willing to stand up and speak about it, so if we as a district have a position you wanna take on something, please let me know prior to the conference, and I'll make sure it gets said.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, see, motion passed, seven oh.
Great. Next item, something that the Board has spent a lot of time talking about for the last couple of years, and that's the sinking fund levy. As you know, you're authorized by the voters to levy three-quarters of mil, point seven-five mils on an annual basis, and we spent a good portion of our last study session talking about how that money is necessary to sustain our physical facilities, and how we were able to creatively reduce the local tax burden in other ways, and with, with the use of some state money, i.e. the at-risk grant, and, and so now, in order for us to actually levy that, we need Board approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the Board of Education adopt the winter millage levy for the two thousand and twelve, thirteen tax collection as presented, for a total homestead levy of five-point-eight-two-two-zero mils, and a total non-homestead levy of twelve-point-eight-seven-five mils.
Support.
Motion by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Ms. Buckley. Are there any questions?
Comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna again thank the administration for going back to the drawing boards and finding this avenue that we can travel down, because everybody at this table, I think, is sensitive to, to doing the best we can for the taxpayers, and this certainly allows us to levy less than fifty percent of what we anticipated just two short months ago, so kudos, and thank you, everyone.
There any other questions?
Just so that we're clear, this, they will see this in January.
That's correct. The winter tax bills probably go out in December.
Mid-December.
Payable, payable in February, mid-February.
And just to let everybody know, this is a reduction in what you're paying in taxes. It's a reduction of about two-point-three-one mils, is roughly.
Yeah, approximately.
So our, your tax bill for the school has went down.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, do we need roll call, or, no? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, seven oh.
Thank you.
Next item, we have some surplus computer equipment. This is old, but not very good. Computer equipment no longer usable, and normally, school districts have to pay to have computer equipment properly disposed of. There's toxic things that are inside of them. It's not okay just to put them in your garbage can or your dumpster. Mr. Morrison informed me that, that we have an organization that is going, is willing to recycle them for free, and so this is, this is a good deal for us, and it's a good way to clear out some space.
That was Apple.
Apple? Apple is the vendor.
Oh, okay, they are the ones...
They are Dell computers, being recycled basically by Dell, or by Apple.
That works.
Mm-hmm.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
I move the Board of Education declare the attached list of computer equipment and TVs as surplus equipment as attached, or...
Support.
Which one?
John.
John, John, okay. Okay, any questions?
I just had one question.
Just go ahead.
This isn't really pertaining to this, but seeing that we're kind of surplusing these, can we maybe possibly look at a study session to kind of find out how we're gonna replace some of this equipment?
Well, the computers, it's noted in here, are the ones that we replaced at the elementary this summer. In terms of the larger TVs, the printers, and the old-style screens, again, the screens were the big bulky screens that have now been replaced with the transition in the summer. The large TVs, they're just not used anymore. So there isn't a replacement plan in place.
In replacement, it's not necessary right now.
Exactly.
Again, we, we're still operating off of our line item for technology, which is the money that was provided for this. We are no longer on target for our three Ts, as you know, the textbooks, transportation, and technology. We're still earmarking money, but it's about half of what it once was, so we're on a slower transition plan right, and we'll have to be until we secure some additional revenue sources.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I don't know how feasible it is, but is it possible, I mean, is any of this stuff useful as a classroom instructional tool to teach kids computer repair, or anything of that nature, or are these things so far over that horizon that it's just not a usable skill for them?
Yeah, they're, the technology is pretty outdated, so...
So save that for the early college program then? You knew I was going there, didn't you? I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing there's no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, seven oh.
Next, we have several items of interest. You have newsletters in your packet from Barth, also from Wick, Hale Creek, Ramel Senior High. You also have a thank-you note from South Redford School District for hiring our, our student in our lift program, and also, I think Anna snuck in a confirmation that the South Redford Board did approve the agreement, so all systems go, and I will tell you that what we have in the works, at one of the upcoming RISA board meetings, we will be airing a video, which we'll also show here, that was created regarding the lift program, so it's, it's really quickly becoming a point of pride for the district, and the primary responsible for that are both in attendance tonight, and we want to thank you. Again, we've thanked you before, but we'll keep thanking you as long as you keep doing well. So I wanted to get that out there also. We have our first, at, at, one of our study sessions last summer, Board members brought up the idea of visiting schools, spending some time talking to students. We have our first visitation scheduled for this Friday at Ramel, and, and what I need to know is who's planning on attending this Friday? We'll probably get started around eleven-thirty. Lunch hours run from about eleven-thirty to one-fifteen, and that's a good time to do a tour of the school, and I know many of you work during the day, and we understand that, but is there anybody that can make it that day?
I think so.
I'll be there.
Okay, well, we've got the Rob and Tom Show, and that will be okay, and for the rest of you that are missing out on this, we have three other ones scheduled this year, so I'll give you a couple of weeks' notice each time they come around.
I will know on Wednesday if I can make it Friday.
Pardon?
I won't know till Wednesday.
That's okay, you can just show up, or give me a call, or Anna a call, and let us know you're coming.
What was that, Danielle?
I was gonna ask if we could maybe visit the day before.
You know what Margie said, is that she hopes that you always feel welcome to visit whenever you want.
Maybe I'll do that.
You're more than welcome to. And again, I will keep you informed. When the other dates start getting close, I will let Board members know.
Are you gonna bring the Tahoe? We don't wanna bring the squat, 'cause then people will think you're...
Yeah, I gotta go see Margie.
I lost something, so.
Okay, last thing on my report. As, as you know, I'm a, I'm an officer on the Board of the Tri-County Alliance, which is eighty-four school districts in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County lobbying on behalf of public education in Michigan, and I'm happy to report that last week, we had our annual fall conference, and our, our guest speaker was Diane Ravitch. Our fall conference was held in, in Lansing, because we invited our state legislators to attend. The conference was very well attended by both superintendents, our A-plus business partners, and our legislators. Senator Hotwood was able to attend. Senator Geis had a committee meeting, he was not able to attend, but those in attendance heard from Diane Ravitch, and if you haven't heard about Dr. Ravitch, she was a former Assistant Secretary of Education, and who has become a very, very strong advocate of, of public education, and talks at length about the successes that schools are having, and one of the, one of the statistics that resonated with me is that on the international test called the PISA test, when you factor in for the higher poverty rate in the United States, our schools do better than any country in the world on those performance tests. One of, one of Dr. Ravitch's continuing themes is the role that poverty plays in education, and how it's more challenging to educate children of poverty, and as we know, because we have children in poverty, we put a lot of safety nets in place to, to help those children, but just looking at test scores without taking that into account is just wrong, and is being used as a way of bashing schools, rather than helping schools to overcome the social challenges that, that some, some of our families have to endure. Anyway, it was a great talk. Legislators and, and our business partners were, were very receptive, and, and she had a standing ovation, so I just wanted to give you an update on, on that, and some of the work that we're doing at Tri-County Alliance to keep people informed. And that concludes my report for tonight.
The next item of business is communications and expressions from the public. I don't have any, so we will move to questions and concerns of Board members. Ms. Kraut?
I don't have anything. I'm just looking forward to Student of the Month tomorrow night at the high school.
Okay, Mr. Thead?
I got a few things. Went to the Barth spectacular last Friday. It was actually pretty good, if you've never attended that. Glad the father schools could do that, because it was actually a fun event. They had games at eight o'clock, like the haunted hallway and things like that, and kids could play games. And a reminder, Hale Creek will have their Halloween walk, also on Halloween, where they walk the subdivision. And also, I wanna remind everybody of a comedy show on November ninth at the high school. It's for a family at Wick School that has leukemia, their father does. They have four kids that attend our schools, and I'll have some flyers here, and I'll pass those around. So it's at eight o'clock on November ninth at the high school.
Ms. Fundenberg?
The trick-or-treat is this Saturday at seven PM, so we invite you, it's a safe opportunity for your children to come and trick-or-treat, and so, and will actually will be a trunk. So I'm hoping that we see a lot of families coming out.
Ms. Buckley?
Nope, nothing for me.
Ms. Beer?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Listen, Mr. McLaughlin. I'll do the big one last. First off, I wanna do, thank the high school, and let the high school know that, you know, they're noticed. The newsletter that they're putting out now is awesome. It looks professional, it's, I don't know who's responsible for that, but please, Carl, extend the compliment. The Government Relations Committee, I mentioned that we had our first meeting, and I, I won't bore you guys with all the details, but I'm gonna ask that maybe a little homework, look at House Bills fifty-eight seventy-nine and fifty-seven seventy-six. MASB and our committee has taken a, a position of opposition to those bills. Briefly, the fifty-eight seventy-nine limits any FOIA request fee to ten cents a page, regardless of any research, and it also puts in a limit of how much a requesting entity, whether it be a newspaper or individual, can be charged in a six-month period, and the concern is that that opens it up for abuse and harassment, because, not that we want to preclude anyone from getting invitation, you know, information, we all know I'm FOIA boy, but, see, I knew I'd get you to laugh. I knew it, John, but, you know, there's, there's some pratfalls there that are really bad. The fifty-seven seventy-six deals with the new teacher evaluation, and currently, the way the evaluations are, that if a teacher is evaluated, is ineffective for two years, that we have to notify the parent. Well, now, a Detroit legislator, in her infinite wisdom, has introduced this bill that would reduce that to one year, and we would need written consent from the parent to place that child. Obviously, there's, there's far-reaching implications in that, so MASB is urging its members to contact their legislators and express their opinions on those two bills. It was a big meeting, it was our first of the year, and, you know, expect more to come, and I'll send you emails if, if there's more to develop on that. The other item that I'm gonna bring up under my report, and this is not to blindside the Board, and I'm gonna eat a little crow here. I treated my colleagues on the Board very rudely at the last meeting by talking about early college and saying, "Well, I'm gonna go rogue, and I'm gonna do this myself." So I'm gonna publicly apologize to you for, for doing that. It was not professional of me, and I, I allowed myself to be frustrated, which has never happened before, but, but where we are on this, I did go last week and met with a gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot his name again, Theo Caruxis, or whatever, is out in Crosswell Lexington Schools, north of Port Huron. They have a successful program out there. He's the one, and Danielle, you're nodding your head. I'm not sure if you went to that MASB. He did a breakout session at one of the conferences. That's what put him on my radar. I'm excited about the program. Not surprisingly, and very much to my appreciation, the superintendent is supportive of the program. My purpose in bringing it up tonight, we're gonna form a committee. I'm gonna spearhead a committee. If Board members would like to be involved in that, please let myself or Tom know. We wanna schedule a meeting probably as early as next week. The committee is going to explore the early college program. We'll, tonight's just whetting your appetite. We'll give you information. We're gonna ask that the study session for November twelfth be, the agenda be amended, so that we can give you some more information on that, but I just don't, I want staff to be comfortable in having these conversations with us, and I want, you know, the Board to know that we're moving forward. A recommendation is likely come, going to come to the Board between December, January-ish, either that we're recommending that we go forward with the program, and this is what we're offering, or gee, we're gonna put the brakes on. The thought is, and, and the, the, the timing is, this is going to be a value add. We're gonna be looking at the redesign of the district, and how we move forward as a district, and this, you know, I think everybody agrees, is a, is a value add for our students, so I'm very excited about it. about it, you know, we want your input. Did I miss anything, Carl?
I don't think so, I'll just say that, you know, as all of you are aware, when board members champion things that are good for children, good things happen, and it's great to see the support, and I know that we can make this work.
Okay, and we, all seriousness, thank you, all seriousness, we are looking, if things go well, crossing our fingers, we're looking at September 2013 implementation. It can happen, if our chips all fall where we want them to, and the education fairy is leaning our way, then we'll be ready to proceed, because it's not like we're reinventing the wheel, we're gonna make it Romulus, we're gonna make it how it will work for us, so stay tuned, and, you know, you know, I'll make sure you're made aware of when the meeting is, Danielle, and anybody else, if you wanna be made aware of when the meetings are, if you wanna be there, you're there. They'll be at the high school at the end of a school day, is what the understanding is right now, I just don't know what day. So I'll make sure that gets out, though.
I just have one question, are we gonna have some parent representation on the...
Yes. What's, the way the structure in this is still kind of fluid right now, because this literally just happened, I communicated with Tom and Carl over the weekend. This, right now, it looks like it's gonna be high school administration, high school guidance counselors, board representation, some AP teachers, and Mr. Hurd is going to look at some parent involvement, because this is going to affect this year's sophomores. They'll be the first cohort in the program, so to answer your question, in the Rob fashion, yes.
Okay, next item is mine here, so November 6th, just to let everybody know, it's elections. Wick voting polls have been moved to the junior high, so don't pull up the Wick looking for your voting poll, you go to the junior high. Remember, folks, to turn over the ballot, please, there's important issues. On the back, that's very important, can't tell you who to vote for or why, but look on the back, there's some areas that need to be addressed. It's a very large ballot, so Mrs. Bragg has samples that you can pick up from the City Hall, or you can download them yourself. What we've done in our house is we printed them off and went through all the proposals and marked yes or no for what we were voting, so when we got there, we didn't get stumped. From, according to the election clerks, they're saying it could possibly take a person up to 20 minutes to vote, so there could be some long lines, so be, just get out and vote. We really appreciate it, 'cause we need all the support we can get, and everything. November 6th for the board members is also a professional development, it's an employee recognition day at the high school at 7:45. If anybody's free, come on down and show up and recognize some of our employees. I signed a stack of certificates, and I was looking at how long some of them folks have been in the district, so I think they'd like to be...
Sixty-two awards.
Yes, there's several of them, and they only went on increments of five, too, so there's 62, so there's some that are in between the bubbles, but they're all, they're all pretty important, and there were some very high numbers, too. Higher than what retired. So also, Bandarama, if you looked, Anna put a calendar in, and Bandarama is gonna be November 1st, so if anybody's free on that day, everybody knows how that can be sometimes, it can be pretty interesting and entertaining, so... Other than that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, which one supported it?
Me.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, supported by Ms. Buckley. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, 7-0.